I'm sorry. You know what, though, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and just adopt the agenda, and then I'm gonna go around with introductions, starting with myself, and we'll go this way. And that'll give trustee Mesa some time to join us. So could I have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented, please? Michelle and trustee Aldinger, thank you. And hi, it's nice to, I think this might be like the first big, big meeting that we've had, so this is kind of exciting. I'm Sarah Jane Howe, school trustee, Village of Cumberland. And I'm just chairing this particular committee of the whole meeting today, because we've been doing some rotations and letting everybody kind of get their feet wet in this type of a role. So I think the earlier meeting went pretty good, but yeah, I'm sure I'll be fine with this one, too. So welcome, everyone.
Hi, everyone, I'm Michelle Wade, I'm the board chairperson, and I am the trustee of Area B. And welcome.
Good afternoon, Tom DeMaello, superintendent of schools.
Hi, everyone, Jeff Manning, assistant superintendent.
Hello, Gaila Kesla, I'm Chelsea, and trustee McCallen Keane, if we're being formal. And yeah, really happy to see many faces at this committee of the whole. There haven't been as many in the last two, so.
Lisa Anderson, I'm the vice chairwoman of the city.
Gaila Kesla, and who's good afternoon, everyone, my name is Shannon Hope Jordan, and I'm the first term trustee for the city board.
Gaila Kesla, Chacha Nelech, Nungwa Am, Susan Leslie, Edelwin, Min Televisit, Susan Leslie, Min Amidima, Brad Falls, Hallie, and I am the vice chair of the board.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Kristy Mesa, I'm Area C trustee, second term, and glad to see you here today.
And Brenda Hooker, the secretary treasurer for the district.
Great. I think the only thing on the agenda today is the presentation on our budget 2023-24, so I'll pass it over to you, Brenda, if that's okay. Thank you.
Do we actually have to do a motion to adopt the agenda?
I did.
Oh, did we do all in favor?
Oh, maybe we didn't do all in favor. We did a first and a second, but no all in favor. All in favor? Thank you.
Sorry, I just wondered.
I knew I would do something.
It's late, I might have missed something.
No, no, thank you very much, I appreciate that. And go ahead.
So did everyone get a copy of the agenda? There were some hard copies as well as, but I do have the first item that we would go through in the package on the screen. So this is the, so in your package, there's the annual budget declaration package, and the first item, section one, is the 23-24 annual budget preliminary report. So on page five of your agenda package is the start of the report. And it's just a little bit of an introduction regarding the school district finances, as well as the connection, the statutory requirements to connect the board's strategic goals with its financial plan and its budgeting process, particularly the framework for enhancing student learning policy and reporting order, as well as the financial planning and reporting policies. So as we get started on planning the budget, there's a number of assumptions and things that go into the planning. And so, you know, number one is setting the priorities for the delivery of student learning. Kind of, we're still managing applications from COVID, looking at projecting our student enrollment, because as we know, the enrollment drives the funding, which then drives the staffing and the other costs that are related to it. We start with kind of our status quo of is our enrollment going up or is it going down? Is the budget, those same costs going forward? And then looking at what costs can and will change? And then, you know, looking at our known cost pressures, inflation, other things that are impacting the budgets, looking at our projected revenues, both from the ministry as well as our other revenues, and looking at the strategies of the board and options around providing a balanced budget, which is a legislative requirement. And then looking at the school-based plans and the board's strategic plan as we start the process. So the ministry did the funding announcement on March 15th, so very quickly after that, we headed into spring break. And so this is just our first initial look at the budget and where we're at as a district.
I just wanted to stop you for a quick moment and just remind everyone that if you do want to go back and think about what's happening today or anything, this meeting is being recorded, and I just wanted to welcome anyone that does watching as well.
Oh, yes, thank you. Yes, so, and if, and at any time during my spiel, you know, if you're not asleep, then feel free to ask a question or get some clarity. I'll try not to have anybody be too sound asleep. So as I mentioned, the first factor is our enrollment. So in February, mid-February, every year, we have to project our enrollment for the following fall. And then we, everything gets created from that. So we submitted our projected enrollment mid-February. We are looking at an increase again for our projections of another 146 FTE. We're almost at that number already. And so, as you can see by this graph, that 2015, we were at 7,376 students. Now we're at 9,918, so there's been a significant increase in the last eight years of student enrollment. Our district projected enrollment is higher than it's ever been. In the past, the highest enrollment was 9,545, was the highest enrollment, which was in 2002. So we've gained that back in the war, and our projections do tend to level off as we go out in the next 10 years, but there's still seems to be significant growth in migration into the district, which is both a good news story and a challenge. So of course, that drives the enrollments and the staffing are built out of those funds that come in. So, but we are seeing still shifts between our online school and our bricks and mortar, we call them regular schools. And so it's still hard to predict the ongoing effects from COVID. Is, because initially in COVID, we saw a significant increase in our online school. We anticipated that that would scale back. It didn't, but it was delayed a year, so our projections last year were overall higher for, higher than we expected for our regular school, but lower than we expected for our online school. So, but at the end of the day, we did see a net gain of 30 students, which was good, so that we were able to do a balanced amended budget. But predicting enrollment is a challenge. And so we try initially, because it's a challenge and it's our best guess as to what enrollment we're going to see in September, we try and be conservative at this time of the year and, you know, anticipate some flexibility either way. If we have more students and we need more staffing, or we have less students, then we could scale back our expenses. So overall, the enrollment we submitted to the ministry in February is creating a expected increase in revenue of $10,293,890, which is a significant amount. But we do have to note, and I did get clarification from the ministry, that 8.6 million of that number is related to the negotiated wage settlements. So 10 million seems like a significant, and it is a significant amount of additional revenue, but a lot of it is already spoken for. So the 1.6 million that's left over is for everything else other than staffing increases. So. One good news out of COVID and all the challenges we're having is interest rates are higher, so we have significant increases in interest revenue, which helps us balance our amended annual budget. And so we're predicting that those interest rates are going to stay higher for the next year, so we're showing a slight increase in our forecast for interest revenue. And so there was some other revenue that might fluctuate a little bit, ongoing impacts of COVID, et cetera, so, and some of the income that may not continue. So overall, right at the moment, we're anticipating just over $10 million in revenue increase. Though I need to note at this point that the ministry has not yet announced the grant. They've announced the funding for the original 5.5% increase for unionized staffing, but they haven't announced the grant for the additional cost of living increase that's been approved. So there is some additional funding that's coming in, but there will also be some additional expenses. So the other thing on the revenue side, there hasn't yet been a decision around exam compensation, whether or not exam compensation is going to be funded. So the revenue will likely, hopefully, go up, but again, our costs will go up as well. So in the cost pressure, so increased expenses, so there, in, there's a bit of a bridge that I won't bore you with, but we are, you know, with increased student enrollment, we do anticipate some increased staffing, as well as increased support staffing, and some additional exam staffing that we're anticipating. So that is part of the cost pressure document that we'll look at next. So again, the ministry number of 8.6 million was clarified, that that was attributed to the labor settlement funding. So a good portion of the 10 million is going to the labor settlements. At the moment, we haven't had the announcement around the exam compensation, so a cost pressure has been included for that. But again, we also don't have the direction from the ministry around what exam compensation would look like and principal base principle. So we're anticipating, but again, that hopefully we'll get some clarity before the May 9th meeting. So with additional staffing, then there's additional benefit costs. We don't yet fully know the costs of those and any implications around our benefit plan adjustments. We're still gathering some of that information, so this is an item that we've left in, but we, we don't have some hard data yet. As well, the Employment Standards Act amendments, the additional five sick days for TTOCs and casuals, we did build that into the amended budget. So we don't have a specific cost pressure for that, but it, it's still an overall cost to the district. So we've just noted it here to say that that's not something that's funded, but we are accounting for it. So, and last year, the Framework for Enhancing Student Learning, we created some funding for schools to help them with their framework goals. And so we're just noting here that we're continuing that funding, and we've, last year the funding was 150,000, and we've increased it for the additional enrollment to be 160,000. Then, as well, as more students come in, then we have other costs attributed to that. So overall, we have a cost pressure of 234,000 for school-based expenses. In the, included in the 8.6 million is the pension fund expenses and benefit premiums, again, are likely going up. But again, that should be funded within the 8.6 million, so we haven't specifically devised an expense for that. One of the items that's in the cost pressure document is we're seeing significant vandalism that's happening at schools, so we've added to our supply costs for that, as well as ongoing energy management projects and fleet maintenance. All of our costs are going up, particularly in supplies, facilities, services, and supplies are significantly impacted. So we've shown a cost pressure of an estimated 135 at this point. So in the cost pressure document, there's also, we're anticipating a growth in our additionist students, predominantly through the night school, we're seeing increased enrollment. So then with that targeted funding, so that's what this is a reflection of, when we receive the targeted funding, which is included in the 10.2 million dollars, we also have budget for to spend that full amount of money. So this is an increase in the expenses attributed to the increased in additionist students. Another cost pressure we're anticipating is utility costs. You see hydro rates are supposed to increase, we're seeing increases in natural gas and fuel costs, so we've added an additional 132,000 in the cost pressure for, for that. Again, with increased students, the licensing and internet and digital services will increase as we support those additional students. Our district transportation contract is going to increase, as well as embedded in that amount is a fuel subsidy. And then we, at the bottom of the cost pressure document, we are looking to do some transfers to local capital, the total 415,000 for assistive technology for the increased student services enrollments, as well as with new classrooms, we're adding two portables to Cumberland, so we need to have some additional furniture equipment for the new classrooms and the increase in students that we're seeing as well. We have the ongoing board office project that we are transferring to be able to fund. So we're proposing a transfer of 250,000 for the board office project. So overall, our projected costs at this point, which will change, we're anticipating 10,495,286 in expenses, so that leaves us in a deficit at the initial stage that we're bringing for discussion of 427,583. So, and as I mentioned, we're not, we don't yet know some of the grants for the cost of living adjustment or exam compensation. And there will likely be some additional costs, because, you know, the timeframe between when the ministry does their funding announcement and when we start to analyze our budgets, it's not been much time, and we had spring break in there, so, though finance did not get much of a break. So, you know, just wanted to, to put out there that these numbers will change when we get to the May 9th. And we're hopeful, well, we're required to have a balanced budget, so we're anticipating that we'll be able to bring that, but, so yeah, that's. And then just the next steps is, every year, the board is required to present a balanced budget to the ministry by June 30th. And we have the online tool to gather information on our website, we'll, we'll post some information there. We have this meeting here, which we're hoping to be back from. And then we've also got the May 9th meeting set up, potentially, if there's interest, we have another public meeting or board meeting set in May. And then we'll maybe try and generate the first draft of the budget for the May board meeting, if the ministry provides us all of the information that we need. Is there any questions at this point? That was a quick, a quick run-through of.
Yeah, or if anyone who's watching has questions, or can they direct their questions?
That's a good, do we have the email feedback?
No.
So then, there's a, on the website, there is an email link, it's live, if anyone has any questions or comments around the budget. So it would be through that, that email link at this point.
Okay. Go ahead. There's a lot of information to digest. So we'd be able to, at a later date, bring stuff forward similar to the presentations that we were able to bring forward in previous years, is that correct?
Yes. So how we anticipated, because the funding announcement was just fairly fresh, and we're still receiving, like, I think the student, the food grant was just announced on Friday, you know, things are just rolling up very quickly and, you know, recently, so definitely we'll have an opportunity. Our, our idea for this meeting was just an initial kind of where we're at, over, looking at the ministry funding, and then kind of what our assumptions were around the initial budget, and then hopefully the May 9th to gather more specific feedback around. So yeah, it, it is a lot of information, yeah. And, you know, there's always an opportunity to send an email or ask questions.
I have two questions for you. One is under the other revenue, the board office, unknown support is missing. Is there any participated timeline?
So initially, the district accepted and supported Nishka because they were having difficulty staffing, and so.
Sure, I can, I can jump in. So the, as was mentioned, we supported Nishka this year in their staffing difficulties, and there's conversations going on about a continuing support, but obviously that'll, the decision that they'll have to make at their end. The nice part about working with that is if we are supporting them, then we hire the staff. If the staff, if we're not supporting them, then we wouldn't hire the staff. So it's a direct relationship. We're not worried about having staff and then, you know, having a cost and no revenue, so.
Any idea when you're going to get that, or is there something?
I don't, I know we're both working nights and we're working with the districts. We haven't heard yet a definitive, I'm guessing by everything else that's going on, their staffing, they're right in the middle of their staffing right now, so I would anticipate, hopefully by May, that's, that's our hope. Gerald, I don't know if you have any, any more concerns?
My second question was under cost pressure adjustments, some program costs, he said, budget increases, which is ahead, that the government has heard, does that include the lotses if they include this?
No, the lotses is funded by the district, so that's not in the targeted funding at all.
That's great. And then, shall I back up another question while we move on? And then the other final one is transfer to local capital for the new administrative space and getting it all updated. Any ideas of the local capacity, where, or what path shuffle would be in?
So we're, right now, we're just in the initial stages of the board office project. We're looking at, or the overall cost, we're trying to determine, is any escalation is a real challenge for facilities? And so once we get the final estimated cost of the project, then we'll have a better idea, and we can formulate those plans. But we, we likely won't have that information probably until the May meeting, some more specifics around that, yeah.
Does anyone else have a question?
So we can always come back to it if something comes up a little bit later, so it was just a quick, quick run-through. So then, the next item in your board package is the ministry operating grant announcement. So, so we saw that with increased enrollment, we, we are getting an increase in the funding, so we are, overall, you can see that the enrollment based funding, the 9,918 students, generating 82.9 million. Then we have the, this indigenous funding, this special needs funding, our other unique student funding of 63 million. Again, get, the ministry funds us based on average salaries, so we are getting a supplement of 1.7 million because our average salaries are higher than the province. And then we get some curriculum and early support funding, and so a total enrollment based funding of 108,647,983.
Can I ask different levels, Sarah, please?
Different levels, oh, level one, two, and three. So that, level one is the highest needs of, especially, it's level two is less, and then level three is, so there's different categories, and I don't see Sean here to, perhaps, sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, it's on the chart on the following page. If you want to look at it, it lists all the funding more specifically, so you can see it a little easier.
So it's like, I'm sorry, I get the categories.
It's ability levels.
Yes, yes, assessment and unique, unique needs.
Yep.
And then, so on the next part is our summer enrollment, our February anticipated enrollment counts for our online school, additional special needs students, and then a May count as well for the total amount at the bottom of 1,112, sorry, 112 million dollars, but then we have adjustments to that. So that was the amount that's reflected in the report. So the next document is the ministry letter that we received highlighting the increases to their basic enrollments, as well as their online learning enrollments, funded amounts, as well as special needs, language learner, indigenous ed, and adult education, and then the different grants that have increased as well. So it's just some clarity around the ministry funding and the information that was provided to the finance department that we use as our instructions for preparing the budget.
Go ahead, Michelle, let's get a question. I was wondering if somebody could explain what the equity opportunity supplement is? It's on the pages, it shows that we get 4,000 for 418,272.
So the, that's part of the ministry funding formula, and I believe that I would have to get, be clear on it, but I believe it's related to rural and remote, smaller locations. So for example, we would get specific funding from Denman and Orby and other.
Like pay for their travel to get to school.
Yes, and so, and it's a calculation based on how far the school is from the board office, so that's.
And other rural districts, whatever, the cost might be a quicker rate as to.
Yeah, and if there's transportation by water, there's, you know, there's specific. And if there's transportation by water, there's, you know, a specific, so the ministry operates on specific funding for different circumstances. So if there's no further questions around the ministry funding, then we can go on to, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just had one. Um, I, the special needs of the students, and maybe this is more for when Sean is here. Because of, although there may be special needs students, they may not be falling within one of these categories. They could just fall under the basic allocation. So that's actually shorting the district already before you even start. So I just, I think that's important that those conversations take place because of the dynamics on how this funding model is basically.
Yes, that's.
Am I correct on that?
Yes, that's a very good point. There's, there's often needs that aren't, they're significant, but they're not specifically targeted or included in that special needs funding. So.
Because you could have an EA that is, is torn between three, but perhaps the one student may not even have special needs that has the additional funding. So it's taken out of the allocated for the regular population, I guess. Yeah, leaving us short. And my.
I was also wanting to check with Candice, see if I could run through this fairly quickly or is there anything my mail stream wanted to add?
Just a couple of comments around the level one to two funding. So the funding is provided to districts based on numbers of students within those certain level designations. But it's not provided for that specific student per se. Like Denise had mentioned, there are funds provided in the basic allocation to support students with some other special needs, which may include some mild intellectual disabilities, learning disabilities, or moderate behavioral support, and some students who are gifted. Within levels one, two, and three, there's specific mention of some of the items where people would actually qualify for us, or students, sorry, I should say, for that funding. So level one, being the high, the highest level of funding, would be students that are physically dependent per se deaf or blind, just as examples.
Go ahead, Megan.
Yes, I just don't have it with me. So can we bring that for the May meeting and provide some theory around?
That's kind of what I wanted to know too, actually. Or if anyone was not included in the supplemental funding, like, because I think there was some areas that were missed, am I right?
Yes, so there are some, some significant needs that are sometimes not funded at all that require support.
I was just gonna say that because I appreciated your statement comment and the conversation could go on. Because the funding model is dated, is that there was some really nice discussion at the MiddleFresh Columbia Public School Employers Association meeting that we last attended, some of us last attended, about that funding model and just how it's following the child rather than following the environment of the entire classroom. And I'm not saying that that means things are changing right now. But it was nice to hear in that large provincial setting, people discussing it and really bringing it to that organization. So if that's, hopefully happy to hear.
Susan, can I just to speak to that? Excuse me. In those same circles, this model is a deficit model. So it's supporting student learning, student health, and student wellbeing. And to bring all of our students, all students to the table in terms of learning. And supporting the whole child. When you are funding a system through a deficit model, it's pretty much the antithesis of that. So it's something that I think is needed. I'm not saying funding is going to change. I'm just saying that there's conversation about.
Thank you. Apparently, our Director of Instruction forced.
Yeah, Director Lamru is just on his way in. And he'll be able to walk through how the funding works for everybody.
So while we read for Director Lamru, let's just look at the cost pressure document. And so the initial revenue, so again, these are the same numbers that were reflected on the report. So you can see that overall enrollment change funding is ten point two nine three million. And then some other adjustments that we completed in there. Interesting coming increase that I mentioned for the ten million sixty-seven thousand.
Page twenty-two.
Seven point three. Yes. Then, oh, I missed section three, I apologize. No wonder you're confused.
It's okay, I thought there was a reason why, so I was just like, age twenty-two, everyone.
This wasn't a PDF, I was going through the PDFs that I had open. So, see, I'm just making sure you're awake. That's right. So this is just a graph regarding the enrollment we have currently and our projected enrollment next year and shows the historical revenues or enrollments that we had in schools. So maybe what I'll do is I'll hide a few of these so that we can see a bit easier the schools. So it's just a by school, kind of what our current enrollment is, and then what our projected enrollment is for the next few years. So you can see that we're projecting to increase in each of the, each of the schools predominantly. And so, yeah, the schools are staying pretty level. And, you know, so overall, next year, we're projecting to have enrollment of that nine thousand nine hundred and eighteen students. The following year, we're anticipating that to be over ten thousand. And three years out, ten thousand one thirty-eight. And from these numbers, we will build a requirement for our finance department this year is a multi-year budget based on these enrollment projections there. So high-level, multi-year budget. So, welcome Director Lamru. So we had a question regarding the targeted funding for the special needs. And so what level one, two, and three categories are, kind of what's included in those funding levels?
So level one includes categorization A and B. And that relates to physically dependent or deaf and blind. And those are your highest level students, I think, that he rates around five thousand per category. Level two is categorized C, D, E, F, G. So it's moderate, profound, life experience, physical disability, chronic health, visual impairment, after-party hearing, or autism. And that's funded, I think, in the award for the partner, right, from twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-three, two eighty.
And then level three is your intensive education, and that's for H. And then we also have K, Q, R, and P. This is your learning disability, gets a bit mild intellectual, and moderate behavior. And this is funded just for regular school funding.
And.
Oh, the dollar for H is, I think, eleven, seven.
Six thousand seven.
Can I ask a quick question? And within those three levels, are those all students? Or are there other levels that didn't receive supplemental funding?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Like, is every, let's call it special needs for the purpose of this document, defined in these three levels? Or are there other levels that haven't received supplemental funding?
Yeah, so what happens is your level one, two, and three receive funding. Your, I think that's called low incentive. Your high incentive is funded within the school or the district funding categories. It's like a block funding that just goes to the district. And that helps cover things like LST council.
Okay.
So we're kind of two steps. One's a block funding. One's actually targeted to meet the level one, two, or three. That we're going to process and finish the designation. It's a separate categorized form for each A, B, C, or D. You have different criteria for each one, and that's what we get audited on.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yep. So Sean, just so, it's just out of curiosity, so if there's ADD or EDP, for example, or now that's what it's called, for any complex. Yeah. They wouldn't fall within those categories, but they end up not getting that funding. But they need to move the allocation funds for the minority population.
Yeah, the way we look at it, our district, I think, in most districts, we're going to support if you're heard this part, that's presented. And so we do that by targeted funding, which are level one, or level one, two, or three. And then through block funding, which district, which they get allocated, facilitate everything that needs support, teachers, the counselors, the learning support teachers, your deaf and hard of hearing.
EA support.
Yeah, things like that. And that's how we support all the districts.
John?
Can you just answer something about the ministry designations? Does that help?
Yeah, that's kind of like the history. They send a team, they choose districts periodically. And what happens recently was done with twenty-nine, they're kind of arbitrarily choose five, five. It's arbitrary, but they choose five or six districts, pre- or mass.
Esther's last, Esther's last year. Numbers are going away present.
So what it is, is they come in, and there's two weeks to do it during COVID, they develop trial. They have password protections. And what they do is they arbitrarily choose names. Last time they chose about seven, eight per district. You then have to pull the file. You have to make sure that all the criteria, each child that we claim meets all the criteria. We then put it there as a package. During COVID, it gets sent electronically. When it's not COVID, they actually send a team, and it's usually a higher tier group, assistant groups. They come to the school, they ask questions, and it goes through every file. And then they make a decision on if we've got the requirement or last month.
Yeah, we, they come in and basically they're saying, so you've claimed so-and-so for a level one. Yep. Okay, according to the ministry document, a level one, you must have all these things in order. Do you have them? Yes, show us proof. Here's the file that has all the documentation, all the supporting documents, all the plans. And they go through, yep, okay, you've got it, yep, yep, yep. Everything's good, that's fine, that passes the audit. If they find something that's not there, like, you need this particular plan. Well, we don't have that. Okay, well, you can't claim that student then. And then that's where they claw back funding. They'll say, at the end of it, they'll say, there is an adjustment based on the audit of X number of dollars. Or, so.
Insurance cover, what do you not gain?
Does anyone else have any?
Our district, we have five hundred and seventy students that are low incentive. And we have a, five hundred and thirty-five high incentive.
How many? High incentive?
Five hundred and twenty-nine. You have it up there.
Five twenty-nine.
We have to see the number shine.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, there was, we had it right here. There you go.
So it starts with special needs level one. That would be your A and B. So that would be physically dependent, deaf and blind. That's is level two. That would be your C, D, E, F, G, H, and, and, and.
And this is, we're looking at column Q, correct?
Yes. No, that's, that's three years out. We're looking at O for next year.
That's the block funding.
Yes. So this is, this is next year's enrollment.
That's right.
Yeah.
So far.
Yeah. So that's what we're looking at for September.
So there, it gives you an indication of numbers for next year. And then for the two years out after that.
Chelsea, do you have a question?
Just a quick question, sort of how, or when are those, when are those the, the sort of, or when would that number be decided after?
It's a great question. So for most districts, September, it is a game that we ask all the information. We then give Josh Porter, it's a really, he worked his magic for one week, ten days. And the cutoff date is like fifty. And then we have a second round that happens in February. It's a side-stake process.
Okay.
The only exception is NICE, which is always a little bit different. And you have different funding periods.
Thank you. And so these numbers were submitted to the ministry as our projections on February fifteenth. So that was our best guess based on consultation with NICE, with the Student Services Department with Indigenous Ed, of what our projected enrollments were going to be. And the way that Jeff does with is PDPs around what they anticipate their enrollment to be. So there's a lot of work. We also have a company called Barragar that helps provide some of our projections. We also worked with a kind of company that does, based on developments in our new housing developments, provided us some additional information around projected student enrollments that we rolled up into our best guess to the ministry. And then we'll see in September whether we're close. Sure. So as you can see on this slide that's right here, we're anticipating seventeen hundred and fifty identified indigenous students. And then in the ministry document, we can see that for every identified indigenous student, we get targeted funding of one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. So providing targeted, specific targeted funding for indigenous education of just under thirty million dollars. And so that money is rolled up into what we call the block funding, but it's targeted within the block. So we have a separate line item where we track our indigenous education expenses. And we work with our Indigenous Education Council to, you know, look at the targeted funding and how we can allocate those.
So the budget that IIC works with, that's it. That's where it comes from, those targeted funds.
I guess I'm still, I think about all this.
Yeah.
I guess, but how? Okay. How, like, it's probably a too typical question to ask, but I'm just trying to understand whether it's specific funding that comes from indigenous students. And then of course, there are a lot of different schools. And I'm just wondering how you make decisions in terms of supporting those students with this larger.
So this is above and beyond the regular funding that, that every student gets. And that's for their educational program. Every student gets X dollars. And then this is the above and beyond fund that the IIC, in conjunction with Bruce, that worked on a plan in terms of how are we going to offer supports to schools in a variety of forms, in a variety of programs. So this is on top of whatever supports the schools are already providing.
And so the draft budget that will be presented to the IIC will include staffing, will include supplies, events, you know, other initiatives. will include supplies, events, you know, other initiatives specifically for Indigenous students. We also have a significant Indigenous student population we're supporting through NICE. That's part of the increase in enrollment that we've seen. And so we also, Bruce and the Indigenous Education Department do a significant amount of work with NICE to support the virtual students as well.
Thank you, Brenda. Go ahead.
Just for clarity, so that 8,625, that's the basic allocation. This is seven, 1,710 is on top of that.
Yep.
That is taken and put into the separate for the IEC.
Yep.
Just clarify.
Yep. Okay. Shannon, do you have one more question there?
Yeah, I do. And our last could be the whole thing. We just, we just passed the break, talk about the carbon offsets that we are required to pay for not being able to catch emissions each year, and that there's some potential that they will increase over time as well at that cost. Whereas that shot in the budget, there isn't productive to increase.
So that shows up in our utility costs. And so we include it in function five, which includes department in our utility cost, and we are projecting to, we're hoping, we saw an increase in those offsets during COVID because we were heating the outdoors a significant amount, trying to manage our refresh rates and bring in fresh air. And so we were losing a lot. So we saw our utility cost go up and our carbon offsets go up. So we're hoping that that trend starts to come back down. But we have budgets of a personal increase there. But that's a great segue into the cost pressure document. So.
Almost like it was planned.
Almost like it was planned.
Yeah. Um, so as I jumped ahead a few slides ago, this is the cost pressure document. So overall, once we look at the enrollment changes, this is the amount we're anticipating going to increase ministry revenue, as well as the other revenue changes, so that 10 million that I talked about in the hard copy of the report. So these are just some more clarity around the numbers that are embedded in the written document around anticipated increases in teacher staffing, potential additional position for board initiatives. We're looking at doing the addition to the inclusive education department because of the increase in enrollment that we're seeing there, as well as increasing some elementary BP time. We're looking at some additional custodial time because of the new classrooms that we're adding as well. Previously, we added a trades position that we're hoping to be able to fund on our ongoing basis within the operating funding. We are looking at some additional QB staffing for our enrollment increases, so additional EAs, youth and family workers, and additional clerical supports we've included as a cost pressure. We've budgeted a 6.75% cost of living increase because we, ministry announced that we would be receiving the full cost of living house, but they haven't yet given us the rest of the money. So we've shown the expense in our anticipated costs. We have, just as a line item, done the same, for exempt PVPs, but we don't yet know if that's going to be the direction from BCPC and the ministry yet. And we're hoping that these costs will come with some funding, but we don't yet know that. We are seeing some increased busing costs in our busing contract, as well as fuel surcharge in transportation. So we've added a cost pressure for that. In the other, as we see increased enrollments, we do see increased school supply budgets, as well as other costs related to increased enrollments. We've included that in the 234,000. Again, this cost escalation, energy management is vandalism and the energy management initiatives that we're going to be able to fund. This, in the utility cost, that's trustee Elgin's question, that would be where we would see an increase in carbon offsets in 132,000 there as well. With the targeted funding for Indigenous education, the 2.9 million we saw on the other slide, that we budget to fully spend that. So that's the 341,000 here. So we have the 2.9 that comes in, and then this is the increase in expenses year over year, as well with additional students, we have increased licensing costs for IT support. So overall, the anticipated cost changes on the operating side are just over 10 million. And then to transfers to local capital, we talked about bringing that total cost increases at this point to 10,495, 286. So that's the deficit we're currently showing of 427,503. But again, we're anticipating some additional revenue, and, but there will also be some additional expenses that we haven't yet had time to identify some cost pressures. So we'll, these numbers will change. So don't hold us to account yet.
Transportation. So the increased cost pressure showing for transportation is around 127,000. That does not include if we actually have to add a route, which is entirely possible with our growth. Usually, a route is between another 50 and 60,000. So that will, it's possible we may have to add a route or an additional route in the same area.
Okay. So is there any questions around the initial cost pressure?
Okay, go ahead.
I'm just curious about the addition of the teachers. Who is that? What is the new district's teacher?
So the board has just headed into the strategic planning process, and, you know, there, there's a number of initiatives that we'd like to maybe move forward. So we just put in a potential position. It's not defined yet, but we wanted to include it as a potential cost pressure that might come out of the, the strategic planning process.
I have one question, if no one else has a question. It was about that cost escalation and energy management line, the maintenance supplies and services. Is that in anticipation? Because that's what we spent this year on fixing things? Or is that income that we are hoping to do preventative measures with?
So it's, it's a bit of both. So we have seen significant cost increases for our vandalism. So we budgeted an additional 3,000 for vandalism because that's basically what the additional costs that have been not funded in this year's budget. But then we're also contracting to do some work around our energy management and getting a sense of, you know, how we're doing on our energy management and our carbon offsets. Is there improvements that we can make? So that is included in this line item as well. So the ongoing services of that company that's helping us kind of define where we could perhaps make some savings in that area and achieve our, if the ministry generates some targets, that we will be prepared with information, how we might achieve those targets. As we're all included in this is fleet maintenance for the, we're seeing increased costs for parts and repairs and maintaining our white fleet, we want of facilities vehicles. So there's the yellow fleet, which is the school buses, which we project out, and then the white fleet, which is our maintenance department vehicles.
I think trustee Ray had a question as well.
I'm wondering if you can expand a little bit on the PvP exempt staffing line.
Sure. So as we mentioned, we're seeing an increased enrollment in inclusive education. There's been a number of initiatives that have added to the pressure of the administration of that department. We've got the pathway staple. We've got the, sorry. Yes.
Accessibility.
Yes. The new, the new school food funding will be managed through that department. So there's been an surplus with the increased students in the department that we're supporting. So we wanted to add potentially hopefully a district BP to that department to help support all the work, the great work that they do, mental health, you know, it's a known challenge. And.
Last four, you go to 160. You have 160 work staff, which is, the higher schools, higher education staff, which 37 are shared staff, which is a piece that applies on staff. So that can get your captain, that's the team that's going to work, and shares, and colleagues, and everybody's involved, good and fine staff that are on the care, that would be their work, and working on all the schools, psychologists, and everyone that's a lot of the people that's helping.
So there's, so there's that position included in that amount as well. We're seeing increased enrollment and needs at our.
Yeah, it was, there's a few schools where the mint time was increased due to complexity of the school and the needs of the school. And having reviewed it for the year, it was felt that those, those particular sites were in need of semantic supports, and that's where the increased time.
That's what is embedded in the 236.
So then my question, come into that with kind of who's bed and with the more complex students, with the teacher staffing, would there be additional funding for teachers to parallel with the class system, as possible? So that puts classes on like 40 divisions?
Yes. So that's, that's what's included in the 1,341,000. So it, this, we're just in the initial staffing discussions and conversations with schools, but we do an initial conversation with the departments around anticipated staffing needs based on our initial estimate of needs and enrollment in each school, and the number of divisions they need, and we build that into this projection. And so I just wanted to go back to this graph here, because, you know, it, increasing administrative supports is never popular. But when we were at the bottom of 2015, there's been very little staffing added administrative and board office level. You know, and the difference between the bottom and 2015, we're projected to be in 2023. So, you know, we're starting to be at the place where we need to add some mint time, add some additional BP positions and supports, finance, you know, we're looking at, and departments, and, you know, doing some of the structure.
Well, climate students that director lumber was mentioning is like quite a, a large amount. And I know just from, like, just from talking to people in the district, how many families are on waitlist to have a diagnosis or to have a, a concrete definition of what's going on in their family. I'm sure that that number is going to increase.
Staffing has increased as much as staff, they're a little bit, which, very many responsibilities, LSTs, schools, which is psychologists, you know, and it's just, as you said, that's why it's all.
Along with the additional staffing, there's additional supports, training, other things that are needed as well. So that's all part of the, you know, we're looking at, trying to identify in our cost pressure.
And just in support of our colleagues with the teachers, I mean, the bits on the ground, it's the EAs that are in front of those students that are usually told that they need to be out of the classroom, and it's the EAs that are taken out of the classroom in order to look after them. So we also need to, I, I see what the information here is for the QB staff. And then, and yes, it's, we can never have enough. Same with daytime custodians, to, because of the frustrations that happen through the sites. That's another one that's huge for daytime custodial. And the trades, I, you talk about the PVPs not having an increase. I don't think the trades, people down at maintenance have had an increase in their, their clientele down there. As the current version, I think there's four, and there's two on capital. So that's like six altogether that are trying to look after all the maintenance. Well, you've got one down there.
When, if we.
So there's, there's a lot of things that we could be using additional on for.
So you'll be pleased to hear that we did include the daytime custodian at the current level in the status quo that we did. So this custodial hours is just for the additional hours for the two new classrooms, portals that come through. So we, you know, we wanted to recognize those needs and try and address it where we can. But yeah, as we grow, there's pressure everywhere. And so I know, I don't mean to be discouraging, 10 million sounds like it's a lot of money, and it is, but for every dollar we get, there's two that are, you know, could be spent, right? So.
And then you've got your IT, and you've got your libraries, you've got, it's just a domino. There's, there's just so many.
Yeah.
You know.
So, yeah. So I'm just about finished my spiel, if I haven't lost anyone. So this is for information, this is a snapshot document from the amended budget that was passed by the board in February. It's just, you know, overall, what our snapshot revenue and expenses were, you know, kind of what our staffing levels are currently.
We need to.
No, we could probably, unless there's additional questions regarding inclusive.
Yeah, sorry, we stole you out of your office. Do you need to go back to work? I just realized, I was like, Andy's emailing again. We should excuse him. Thank you very much for coming to talk to us. Sorry, Brenda.
That's all right. Thank you. So this is just a little infographic of, you know, kind of where our money comes from, where it goes, you know, that the number of students we're supporting, and, you know, the number of, you know, breakdown of regular students, as well as online and our designated areas, et cetera. And just, you know, a snapshot of our, you know, the students that are enrolled in French programming, overall, kind of what we're planning to do with some capital investments. And, you know, overall, just a summary of the inclusive learning in February was budgeted through 14.5 million. And our class size and composition funding is 12.6 million. So that's just a quick snapshot. And then I don't have open the last document, which is the, just the.
Multi-year comparison.
Yeah, the multi-year comparison. So it's on, it's on the last page of your document on 236. Oh, it won't find me. But what I thought was really interesting around this document was the, how much we have grown since 2019. You know, in 2019, our revenue, based on our enrollment, was 85 million. Now we're at 101.5 million. So that's a significant growth. So this document just So this document just compares our actuals to our preliminary budget, to our amended budget, and then compares it to the percentage of operating expenses. And then this column here in the orange is a roll up of all the districts across the province and what they spent. So you can see overall, and this document is based on our function program. So we talk about function one, which is instruction. Function four, which is district administration. Function five, which is operations and maintenance. And then function seven, which is our transportation. And so we've broken the, and this is just straight expenses and compares year over year as well as to our provincial amounts. So that's just quickly. So if there's any questions or if we want to do a click around. There's a lot of information to be seen.
Does anyone have any specific questions? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say.
Jennifer, you're next.
For all the part, we're basically like those two words of budgeting what happens behind the scenes. Just with, when we are trying to do our budget that finale, that's a little bit hell not better. It's still a lot of work behind the scenes. And I think dedication goes, goes out to the ones that definitely were involved with us.
Candice and Kathy, I just get to talk about it. Candice and Kathy do the bulk of the work on preparing all this information. And, you know, as I mentioned, with the way the funding announcement works, the finance and facilities don't get much of a spring break at this time of year. And it's, you know, really appreciated the work that they did to get us to this point. Especially with today being the first day back from spring break. It was scrambled and Heidi compiling all the information for us while she was away, so.
So we're just being able to have the opportunity to participate in this matter. It's kind of a different than what we used to, but yes.
Yeah, we, we really look forward to your, you put into, you know, the draft document. We'll have some hopefully supporting announcements further, some better information.
Jennifer Fisher?
Uh, so Brenda, just going back to your step. Worst case scenario, a little more money comes in, we're in the red, four hundred and fifty-two thousand. Now, have we anticipated that if they, there's still more money coming out of I T? I have pretty much a preference, but there is still actually more money coming out of I T. But we don't really know that. Like, do we have an edge guess? And if so, what does that look like? Plug in a company, edge guess, what would that number look like in the black? Do we have that?
So the, of the ten million dollar increase in funding, eight point six of it was attributed to the unionized negotiated settlements. So those were based at five point five percent. So the cost of living increase is a little point two five percent. So we should see some additional that the ministry hasn't yet announced at RANFOR, but we don't know how they're going to calculate it. So, you know, we know that we should see some additional money. We are hoping that exempt increases will be funded as well. They were this year, but they haven't yet made a decision about next year. So we're, those are the two pieces that we're still hoping for additional revenue. And so we've, as I mentioned, the six point seven five percent expenses are already built into those numbers, but we don't yet have the revenue to offset it. And worst case scenario, then we might have to look at the transfers to local capital. So those are in there as a hopeful because we know we have those needs, particularly around the increased furniture equipment and accessibility equipment. But the board office project does need to be funded as well. So, you know, but if, if we were, those are hopefuls. So that would be the area of flexibility. And then the other area of flexibility was, you know, perhaps, you know, the additional teacher, district teacher position, we could fund a board initiative or something like that. So we, we've tried to anticipate all our cost pressure, but we still have some work to do to finalize the number based on additional revenue we see. So we, if, if we were in a deficit at the end of the day, and we do have reserves, so we do have surplus that we would offset the anticipated expenses in order to balance the budget. So I know that's not, that's a political answer that's not very specific.
If you look at it this way, if our fingers are crossed, let's say that they do fund the exempt. Yeah, and they fund it at five percent. So right now, the cost is seven seventy-five at, at six and three quarters. If they fund it at five, you're pretty much going to wipe out the deficit. I mean, that's, that's really simplistic. And then accounts, accounts are looking at me going, you can't say that. You can't say that. But that's, that's where I would look at it. So I think any, any of that revenue would be.
Yeah, but we also, because of the timeframe, there's some departments and some costs that we haven't yet been able to really quantify. So there'll be, even if their funding comes in, there's still some additional cost pressures that we don't have included in the stock as well. So we're still, you know, working hard to try and finalize the information. But at the end of the day, there will be a balanced budget. Yeah.
Anybody else?
There's one of the exempts that ended up negotiating, there's six point seven five percent increase.
They haven't.
Oh, you're welcome. Sorry. The teachers and the, the Q B staff, so whatever we ended up getting the exempt that.
Well, this, so that was just a straight assumption based on the, as I mentioned earlier, the B C P C haven't given their direction around exempt compensation yet. But last year, the direction we got was that the increases were anticipated to be the same as what the unionized staff got, so that we didn't have compression inversion. So this is just straight trying to put a number on the paper. There's been no direction yet around that, so. But there is an exempt compensation committee provincially, of which I will be sitting on. So I, I might have more information for me. Yeah, we'll see.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, like, any family affordability funds that have come in, that was a special funding, so it was never included in the initial budget of twenty-one to part twenty-two, twenty-three. Therefore, the rollover is not, is not included in the budget as well.
No, that's right. And the other thing, this is just straight operating revenue expenses. So the new student food funding is not included in these numbers either.
That's perfect. If it's all separate.
Yes. Yeah, so we are, right now, we're, because we, we budget to spend all the special purpose funds. So in our initial budget, we show this is the amount of special purpose revenue and this is our anticipated expenses, staffing. So it's, it doesn't affect the four million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand number because it's four million, I just increased our deficit. By a lot, by a lot. Yeah, so that's totally separate. So this is just focusing on the operating side right at this moment. Other than the identified hopeful request for transfers to local capital.
Okay. Thanks so much, Brenda. That was amazing. And I really sincerely thank everyone for coming. It's so nice to see everyone and, yeah, a lot of good questions. And if anyone has any additional questions. Oh, go ahead, Candace.
Just a comment.
Sure.
Budget and the documents thus far. So there is a link on our website for people to give feedback.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Michelle, Christie, all in favor?